Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Shinowitz?
Here.
Mr. Hayes? Ms. Hoof?
Here.
Mr. Otto? Ms. Pat?
Here.
Mr. Whelan? Ms. Wyman?
Here.
Mayor Satterwhite?
Here.
Mr. Whelan called earlier this evening and indicated he won't be here due to an illness. Um, see, the first item on our agenda this evening is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, would be our May 19th meeting this year, is there a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor please, if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? I have one, um, right after petitions and communications, we'll be having a presentation by Dr. Umez Thakkar, uh, he's going to be talking about some projects that he's been working with at the University of Illinois in conjunction with the school districts, particularly the Urbana School District, and it's, the presentation is on promoting teaching and learning with new technologies in the Urbana School District. So we'll be hearing that right after petitions and communications. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go to petitions and communications. Any petitions and communications for all members of the public? Council members? Yes.
I just wanted to let the public know that tomorrow evening, um, I'm going to be hosting a downtown available space tour with Ryan Bro from the City of Urbana. Uh, it starts at 8:00 PM, we're going to be meeting, um, kind of on the corner of Race and Main at the Illinois Student Environmental Network office, 110 South Race, um, 8:00 PM. And if people want more information, they can call me, um, at 384-0830.
Okay, thank you. Any other petitions and communications from council members? Um, we'll go ahead with the reports of standing committees, we don't know how long this will take yet. Um, committee, the report from the committee of the whole, Ms. Wyman, are you here?
First item is item E1A, ordinance number 2003-06-055, an ordinance approving the annual budget fiscal year 2003-2004 from finance. Is there anyone here, uh, for, for the, um, for the committee, I so move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and this was as it came from committee last week, which had a few changes from the original budget document regarding the EDC, social service funding and guidelines for spending, um, money in the parking system for parking lot improvements. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Shinowitz?
Yes.
Uh...
Oh, Ms. Shinowitz?
I would move to defer the budget for two weeks, to be, um, I don't know what the date would be, the 16th, to be discussed on June 16th. Second.
We have a motion to defer and a second, so we'll see the budget in two weeks. Next, oh, uh, Ms. Wyman?
Uh, next is item E1B, ordinance number 2003-05-051, an ordinance amending Schedule H of Section 23-93 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code requiring stop signs at a certain intersection, Boulder Drive at Windsor Road, Lydia Drive at Myrtle Ridge Drive, um, and, uh, I think, can we take the, these others?
Yeah, might as well be able to take B and C together.
B and C, uh, in omnibus form, so item C is ordinance number 2003-05-052, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Oakland Avenue. For the committee, I so move.
Okay. Your motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Shinowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Hoof?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with five ayes. Next, oh, uh, Ms. Wyman?
Uh, next is item E1B, ordinance number 2003-05-051, an ordinance amending Schedule H of Section 23-93 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code requiring stop signs at a certain intersection, Boulder Drive at Windsor Road, Lydia Drive at Myrtle Ridge Drive, um, and, uh, I think, can we take the, these others?
Yeah, might as well be able to take B and C together.
B and C, uh, in omnibus form, so item C is ordinance number 2003-05-052, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Oakland Avenue. For the committee, I so move.
Okay. Your motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Shinowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Hoof?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with five ayes. And, Ms. Wyman, I believe our system's working, so maybe we can call Dr. Thakkar back up and, uh, proceed with his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to, uh, thank you and for appointing me to the Community Development Commission, and I want to thank the council for voting for that, I very much appreciate your trust, and I also want to thank Ms. Wyman and the mayor for inviting me to, you know, share some of her work with my local schools in town. I should say that I enjoy living in Urbana, and I also enjoy working at University of Illinois, so in this regard, I consider myself very fortunate to be here.
Do you want to speak up a little closer to the microphone? Thanks.
At the University of Illinois, I have a great job at the National Center for Super Competing Application, or NCSA for short, where I'm a member of Education, Arts and Training Division. Uh, my focus is working with scientists and adapting new technologies to promote teaching and learning for all audiences, K through 12, high, uh, undergraduate and graduate. And for this work, I work with different groups at NCSA, also different units on campus in Urbana Champion Teachers. So before I begin, I would like to maybe recognize my colleagues who are here, uh, Ben Grocer from Beckman Institute, Michelle Hin from Education Psychology, Paul Reilich at NCSA and, uh, Vice President for Wizbok Incorporated, and Ms. Sue Herrick from Central Academy, uh, Ms. Joliet Moore from Yankee Ridge Elementary School, Ms. Pam and Valigan from Urbana Middle School, and Mr. Paul Locke from Urbana High School. So they are some of the people that have been working for last seven, eight years. So let me... So we'll be reviewing several examples, essentially focusing on different aspects with K through 12. I also want to share that in the past, we have worked on many projects that have been, I won't discuss today, but there are some of the projects that have been still ongoing, even though they were many years ago. One of them is biinformatics, that's, uh, looks at the Pi and the history of it with Ms. Moore, and then there is a project about cyber mummy with Ms. Van Valigan, and, uh, we had a project with Urbana High School and with Centennial High School, where Urbana students develop problems for Centennial student problems. And a project with Teresa Michelson, the Urbana High School library, and she is retiring today, so that's very good news. So the first example is remote instrumentation. So we'll briefly discuss some background information and then review some projects and current overview of her project. The image that you see is of a second grader in Nashville, she's looking at a specimen that she actually sent by mail to, uh, Urbana, Beckman Institute, and she controlled the microscope, we'll learn more about it. So why do we want to create scenarios where people can access expensive instruments, uh, from the classrooms? Not every school has an access to expensive instruments, and we want to use the web to provide a sense of laboratory. So our approach at Illinois, especially at Beckman Institute, is to make the web seem like a worldwide laboratory, so that expensive instruments can be available to university schools or rural schools for that matter, because, uh, we can only provide, uh, access if we have sustained opportunities for students to work with new technologies. Why is this important? One of this favorite examples is the Mars Pathfinder. Uh, I remember, uh, this happened 4th of July of 1997, it was a Friday, and just afternoon our time, uh, the Pathfinder landed, and I was working with a lot of teachers, uh, and the program ended actually at noon not that day, but I really wanted them to leave so that I could sit in my office and actually look on the computer, can actually see the live thing happening, because it takes about 10 minutes for instruction to go from JPL in California to Mars, and then 10 minutes to come back. So that's an example of remote instrumentation. And we are looking at things where scientists are doing operation in France from Nioph, for example, and people don't travel to different places to control telescopes, which they can do from their homes. So if, our goal is that if, today scientists are doing this, the students and teachers may need to learn about it. For example, email, which is so popular today, was not much, uh, daily use in schools a couple of years ago, so there's a way for things to come down. To give you an idea that we, same approach that we use with, uh, K through 12, we also use undergraduates. So for example, students in, who take the introduction to astronomy at the University of Illinois, they actually study the Champagne, Urbana night sky through the, uh, through real-time images, so they can study different parts of the sectors of the sky. Here, uh, at one point on the upper right corner, you can see the asteroid that one of the students identified, uh, just by looking at the, uh, the images that she acquired. This was our first project that we did, where we wanted to actually have an MRI system in Beckman, which is magnetizing resolution imaging instrument Beckman, accessible to scientists online, so we wanted to see if the kindergartners could control the system, then so could busy scientists. So we created a project where we had 10 classrooms from Champagne, Urbana, and around the parks, and we had about three schools from Urbana. So the picture you see is of Urbana Middle School, uh, we worked with Ms. Van Valigan and Ms. Mahdi Stanbar, who's now at different school in Champagne, and, uh, students learn how to control the telescope, in this case, MRI, and create images and so forth. We still get, today, even today, we get over, uh, close to 2,000 hits a day on our website. So it's a very popular project. Uh, this is an example of how the students actually acquired, they would, in this case, the white sparks you see on the right-hand corner are the heart of the, the growing embryo. The students would ask questions, and the scientists from Urbana, University of Illinois, would actually, uh, provide information of what, what that is. And after that, we decided to see, well, how can you sustain this project? Because we are getting inquiries from all over the world, the ones they wanted to do with us, so we decided to create a professional development program with teachers, so they could integrate the project in the curriculum. So here you see an example of a preschooler teacher, essentially undergraduate Illinois wanting to be a teacher, and she's working with Ms. Moore at Yankee Ridge, uh, in the second grade classroom. So then we decided that we wanted to create a project where you could have access to instrument every day, uh, speaking that's for a long period of time. So we have a project called Bug Scope, which essentially allows students from anywhere in the country to send specimens and actually control an expensive microscope, about, uh, $600,000 microscope at a given, and we have it, a model that is actually the only model in the country right now, which classrooms pay no cost, and, uh, our resources are such that it costs little, very less, and we have it once a week, and so far, we had over 130 classroom sessions from close to 35 states. Uh, this is a session in, uh, in Chicago, to give an example, this is a science, uh, you might consider a science project, but this is used by a mathematics teacher, because she wants to show connections to different sizes and shapes and scales and so forth. How do people participate in this project is they send us, they apply, and then we, they send us specimens over, uh, by US mail, and then we have students from university high school actually working to set up the, uh, the specimens and then interact with the classrooms remotely. The two students you see there, uh, they both graduated recently, one is an undergraduate studying photography, another is an undergraduate studying physics, and they both, at least the one on the, on the left, wants to be a microscopist, so this was something of a success story for project. And all the images that classrooms acquire are part of their prominent database, and people from many classrooms can participate at the same time. And this is how the interface looks like, they can control, uh, for example, in this scenario that we have, people go from 17 times all the way to 30,000 times. In a normal classroom microscope, you can go at most 400 to 600, or if you're a better school, like uni high, a thousand times, in a light microscope. So this allows them state-of-art tools in the classroom, and a scenario where they can actually zoom in or ask questions to a remote participant. To give you some examples, here is a second grade classroom in Yankee Ridge, and, uh, uh, here, the students wanted to study hatchling crickets and adult crickets, and you can see it's a scale of 12, 80 times, which is essentially difficult for a regular microscope, and they could not be able to see the difference, and, uh, and here are students, you know, working, uh, I suspect these are now in middle school, uh, but they are enjoying their, they're sending the specimens, and they are looking at closely at what they have been seeing, and then they do journals of their work with the teachers. On the Yankee's website, you can see a detail about what the students and the teachers did in the project. Uh, another example would be middle school, and you can see again here, the scale is pretty high for the students to work, they send in their own specimens, but in this case, there were three science teachers working with a technology teacher, Ms. Van Valigan, who's here, and essentially, they were able to do science the way scientists do, uh, looking at their own specimens, and, uh, in collaborating each classroom with another classrooms, it was a very collaborative enterprise for that day. I should also say that I like to work with Champagne schools too, and, uh, which, which way we can, uh, we want to work with all the schools, and we have, uh, Ms. Herrick here from, uh, Central Academy. This was our first session, uh, and, uh, they were doing a project on the Riverwatch Program, so they're sending their water bugs, uh, the students were able to look at the specimen in the classroom and then on the computer, using the microscope remotely. In addition to working with K-12, we also try to work with university educators, so that their students who want to be teachers are also helpful in training those. So we've, if you, to give an example, we have a teacher educator from Milwaukee, uh, using the same resources and then working with the preschoolers teachers, who in turn, when they go to school, apply, so it's pretty much a cycle of work. I say, a lot of people use the terminology, a classroom as a laboratory, we believe that that may not be accurate reflection, because in a laboratory, you may have a scientist, a technician, a student, and so forth. In a, in a classroom, a teacher cannot be expected to be like a laboratory, because she or he has a lot of responsibilities, and of course, the pay is not good. So, one of the things we like to do is, we, we try to create an environment of trust and respect with the classroom, so that we give the classroom opportunity to act like a professional scientist, so there's apply, they send you a proposal, and then we accept it, or, or everything automated, and then at a given time, the classroom and the students control it, and when they have questions, we have people at the remote end answering the question. So we provide infrastructure that gives the classroom a opportunity to be like a laboratory. So, uh, it takes a lot of work, and we believe that we have a model that creates a research enterprise with different classrooms, and it is essentially an Urbana model. Uh, some of the things that we're trying to learn is, how do you engage students, teachers, and, uh, in inquiry, and what role the scientists play and so forth? So we essentially want to create an inquiry community centered around new technologies in learning and teaching. Another example is about, uh, we are working with middle school girls at Urbana Middle School with, uh, Ms. Van Valigan, Mr. Erlinger, and, uh, Ms. Cooper. Uh, so, this image that you see is about two students who call themselves the unknowns, although I think they are very well-known now because of the picture, uh, and, uh, thanks to Greg Klein from the News Gazette for doing this. Uh, so we'll, I'll briefly review the project and share, share with you our current plans. So essentially, VR, and you will see a video later on, essentially allows you to be within a simulation or a data set or a world, and your actions are controlled, the way you actually move your senses and so forth. You will see an example of it soon. Now, this is a cave that we work at University of Illinois, it's one of the earlier, one of the earlier caves. Uh, we have a strong partnership with UY Chicago, of course, so, uh, they were the original creators of cave, but the Urbana Cave is very much research and development, and one of our colleagues here, Mr. Paul Reilich, he's, uh, one of gifted cave programmers. A lot of people use VR for different reasons. Here's a colleague of mine, Rachel Brady, and she is now at Duke University, and one of her expertise was to develop applications that are used by veterinary biosciences people. So for example, she's looking at a 72-hour chicken embryo, and she will, you can actually look at the data, identify what you want to identify, and then somebody else can follow what you have been doing. So it's a very way to look in detail to features that you would not be able to do it without being immersed in the data. One of the projects that we did in the past was, uh, street crossing, and you can see here, Race and Michigan in Urbana, and we actually had to go to the corner and actually get all the data points and then have it on the computer, and take some pictures as well. So, uh, of course, in the world, which was in the cave, you could not see the new Urbana track field, but the image of, if you've been to Race and Michigan, you can see some resemblance to the street corner, and our goal was to show students how to cross the street, especially those with disabilities, and we worked with, uh, both Urbana Champion Schools, and one of the things we found out was the four-way street, uh, intersection is very difficult to, for both general education and specialist students. So we had students, all of them kindergarten to young adult, and those from young adult were those who had, uh, you know, wheelchair access and so forth. So we had a lot of students with traumatic brain injury and so forth. Another project we did, we worked was with teachers to show them the role of VR in the classroom, and we had a teacher from Urbana High School, and also people from Illinois State Museum. So here is the project where, the image that you see on the right is by students from Maryland and Illinois State Museum, they're actually looking at the excavation on the west central Illinois, uh, and they looked at, uh, it's about 5,000 years old, so you see the yellow, the white spots are actually debris from the stone tools, and they're looking at the, the 3D model, they identified that this was essentially a stone tool quarry. Uh, so they were able to actually practice the way archaeologists actually look at the excavation and identify what the story is about that. So one of the reasons why we did the VR savvy project is, how do you actually work to engage young girls, especially those at the middle school level, in computers? And one of the things that we are looking at is to build fluency with information technology. By that, we mean a little bit ducked in this understanding of technology, so that it becomes a good foundation, so they're able to work with more technology as they grow older, and it becomes more embedded part of the school and personal lives. This, this kind of fluency, which essentially includes intellectual capabilities, which very well may be sustained reasoning or anticipating changing technologies, IT concepts, which may include digital libraries or programming, for example, on IT skills, maybe such as turning a computer or even using computer to communicate with others. Essentially, fluency is basically continuing with K-12 undergraduates, so if we have students who are well-adapted at a K-12 level, then you're hoping that it'll build on to the undergraduate career as well. Why is this important? This is very important because in the year 2010, there'll be 60% growth for IT workers, and eight of the fastest 10 occupations will be computer-related. Uh, women's labor force, which, uh, will be increased to, uh, close to even parity, and, uh, it may lead to new applic, new job descriptions, such as bioinformatic specialist, and we'll discuss this a little bit later with Mr. Locke's work. So, uh, one of the things that we're doing with VR savvy concept is that we're trying to give students a good chance to create and design their worlds, uh, the way they would like to design them, and they'll learn how to make good time use in the cave, they work with teachers in technology, science, and art, and they get a chance to collaborate with experts. So for example, here are three girls, they are in, actually, in ninth grade right now, they call themselves the Path of Girls because of the film they like to watch on TV, and this, this is what they created on their own. May we have the video, please?
This is our house right up here in front, uh, and we created this last year, and we added it in. Um, this is a tornado to, um, your right, and we've got lightning clouds and a flying cow flying towards the tornado, and trees around flying towards the tornado too. And if you go towards the cows, and we've got a well right there, and if, if you actually look into the well, you can see water inside, or water like texture, yeah, you can see. And then, these are the cows that we created, we actually started with one cow, and we cloned it a whole bunch of times and changed the colors, and then we created a fence around it, and then...
We have chickens.
We created chickens. We were gonna put a fence around them, but we didn't have much time, so, it's one chicken up in the air, and a few more on the ground, they were hard to move. And then we have a barn over here, and a pack where, of course, we can type of things. Yeah, we can actually move them to the barn, like that, and we've got three cows in there, back up. And we actually do have three cows in there, and, um, then, over here, we have a whole bunch of corn, and we actually started with just one stalk and cloned it, um, a whole bunch of times to make a bow, and then we cloned that bow a whole bunch of times to make a square, and then we cloned the squares a whole bunch of times, and that's where we ended up with.
Can we turn off the video, please? So that was just a snapshot of, uh, two students working, uh, who call themselves independent women, and they've designed their own prairie. So our objective for the pilot phase was to understand if the students were enjoying what they were doing, and learning new things, and we wanted to further develop a program that we're using, and we also wanted to explore a new technology, uh, which essentially a portable VR system in the school, which is developed by Mr. Paul Reilich, I mentioned ago. So you see in the image on the top is developed by three students who are in eighth grade right now, and they created a campsite prairie on their own, and, and the image below is students and teachers actually, uh, working on the VR system at school, uh, enjoying, and there are many students, uh, working on their projects during the school, whenever they have free time throughout the day. So to give you an idea how our pilot present, participation works, is that we had, we had to spend a lot of time getting approval, not only from the school districts, uh, but also from the parents and teachers, and we worked with, uh, 10 students, five from each grade, seventh and eighth, and then every Tuesday, students actually came to the Beckman Institute, uh, about hour and a half, 45 minutes per group, and the groups that were not visiting, they actually worked in the school. So you can see in the top photograph, uh, students actually working in the school, uh, one week, and the next week they would come to the cave, and they plan, they, they would work in the cave, and then they planned the next week in the, in the school. So it's essentially a commitment from their part throughout the semester. And towards the end, uh, we also had the students share that worked with the parents and experts, which was a very important thing we learned, and also, working in the school using a Wizbok, for example. The students, well, some of the things they were learning is, they found that, uh, they were able to appreciate technology much more, and they were beginning more comfortable with technology. Uh, and, uh, one of the things we learned is that the fact that they worked together with other students over a long period of time was very helpful. But more important was, they liked to make their own choices, they liked to be left alone, given, or, given the set of resources, and they would like to create what they would like to create, and that was something, and empowerment was something that we realized was very important. From the teacher part of view, they learned, uh, by mentoring the students, they, they will, uh, they supported students in, whether in technology, whether in science or in art, and also we learned from the teachers that it would be nice to have a VR system in the school itself, so that the students can actually work at that time, and teachers can also benefit from learning those things. Our current plans are to actually, uh, develop, uh, papers about our work, so that this is a model that we feel is a, a good model for, for the funding, for example. We also want to further develop the software program the students use, and also we want to explore, uh, Wizbok for UMS. For example, on the figure that you see on the bottom, essentially, the three students are, are in a most comfortable, uh, scenario, where they are doing, uh, they're sitting, enjoying their work, and that would be something difficult for them to do if they were working at a university, because that is not a familiar environment. So we feel that one of the things that we learned is to have systems like that in the school settings. The last example is about bioinformatics, and this is with Mr. Locke from Urbana High School, and we've been working with him for a number of years. So I'll give you a, a description about the project and overview and some lessons that we have learned. Uh, three years ago, three years ago this June, President Clinton announced the first survey of the Hiram Genome Project, and, uh, even before that, uh, the bioinformatics, the, the merging of the field of biology information technology is really spearheaded. All over the world, people are doing amazing work, so there's a lot of information, and, uh, we wanted to create a systematic access to it, so one of our colleagues at Illinois, and now at San Diego, uh, created Biology Workbench, uh, a tool that is developed for scientists. And, uh, one of the things that the National Science Foundation suggests is that they would like to have tools which are open-ended, they support inquiry, and they relate to the professional career requirements. Earlier, we discussed bioinformatic specialists, so they are interested in such things. So one of the things we would like to do is create tools that are made for scientists, but adapt them for students and teachers based on their needs, cases of interest. Uh, so we created a biology student workbench, which allows students to make meaningful questions in biology through appropriate interfaces, and our partners includes graduate students, teachers, educators, bioinformatic specialists, even librarians. The image that you see on the right, uh, variously done by students in Mr. Locke's High School, they were trying to study different whales, and, uh, and they will spend the whole semester looking at whales. And we'll talk more about it later. Uh, for example, through these resources, people can study more about sickle syndrome emia, for example, or cystic fibrosis, uh, they can learn more about, everybody knows somebody which has some of these kinds of issues, so they can learn more about it, they can get a deeper understanding, not only of the tools, but also the data, the same data the scientists may have. So, let's see another video, please. So let's see another video, please.
If you're having trouble finding numb organisms, if you're having trouble finding proteins or databases to use, try some of those suggestions that I had in class.
Are you finding anything?
Yes, sir.
What are you finding?
Just found some species that are used to work.
Good. Do you feel like a real biologist?
Yeah.
It took a long time, like, trying to gather up all these hits or whatever and we put it in importance and, and then it looks really confusing. We can figure it out. I think we should be okay though. First we searched for my own to figure interesting things up for it. And we came up with lots of different organisms. And we decided to keep the ones that are related to whales, porpoises, otter sea animals. So we put them in, we saved them, just so it's important, important to be important to our file. And then we decided to narrow that down to like 15, get rid of some of the really far off ones. So we mostly have like porpoises, whales, a few different ones, even otters and two seals. So we just kinda wanted to see how they're related. And then we pick them, we select them on here, and then we make a tree that we can just see how closely they're related. So this is our tree that we came up with, that's a rooted tree. And here is a humpback whale. And then one thing that was interesting is that you have the style of that dolphin right there and the killer whale. And they're really closely related because they stem from the same region, I guess. That's really interesting. You wanna like make that like old whale and dolphin and that, that is interesting because the other dolphins, or sorry, the other whales, you can select, like, some stuff we found. And like, this is the Eurasian otter. And then this is a gray seal, the harbor seal. So like the otters and seals are kinda closely related, but you'd expect that from the way they look. So basically what we're just saying is see how everything's related and the difference in evolution. And then our finished product, it's gonna be so much of this, but more in detail, is that I can have these little colors, we can actually have a scientific names of each animal and probably a picture to see whether or not they do look alike. If they don't look alike, then you try to find out why. And so if you want to evolve, fashion.
Thank you. So you were seeing in that, in the video clip, students in Mr. Locke's class, they were actually studying how different organisms are related. In this case, they selected whales and dolphins and so forth, and they found that killer whales and dolphins are related, something that they would not have known with other than looking at raw data from the workbench and discovering on their own. So it was something that we believe how you can start from a gene, they look at a different structure and study relationships, and something that they learned on their own through the semester as part of the biology class. Some of the tools that we additionally use is that we create inquiry units. So for example, units created by Mr. Locke on how different organisms are related can be used by different teachers in Illinois and elsewhere. So we already have teachers from near Chicago, they would actually use Paul's unit and try to adapt them for their different classrooms. So we try to create materials in Urbana that would also be used to students and teachers in Champaign or anywhere else for that matter. Some of the lessons that we are learning is that bioinformatics, you can integrate different ways, both in K-12 and undergraduate. We try to customize our resources in variety of ways. The image that you see on the right is a university graduate student working with Paul's classroom this past year through, so that the students have access to somebody who's training bioinformatics as well as along with Paul, so that there is much more way to integrate new technologies in the classroom. Finally, I wanted to, I thank you for inviting me over here. I would like to, once again, stress the fact that what you, the work that you, that I just shared is part of equitable collaboration between people in different groups, at NCSA and other campus units and Champaign-Urbana schools. Some of the work has been supported by different groups such as Campus Research Board and Illinois Board of Higher Education and NSF over many years. The image that you see on the right is of Josh Michaels and he's worked with me since he was in high school and then as undergraduate. Right now, he's at Microsoft. And that you see his picture in Fortune magazine. Josh is one of the smartest kids I had met, very, very bright, and I'm very happy that, that he's really, he's grown. And I think I'd like to say that working with us has helped him as well because he, he was able to work with new technologies. And this picture, this feature in Fortune magazine was how he actually, in his apartment, controlled everything wireless, you know? So he actually made his toaster or vacuum cleaner, everything operated automatically. And many of the teachers that you see on the back from Urbana High School, Urbana Middle School and Yankee Ridge, they were all Josh's teachers at some point. If you have any other questions, be free to contact me anytime. This past, this coming year, I'll be at NS, National Science Foundation and I'll be commuting back and forth to Urbana. And if there's anything I can do for the city of Urbana, I'll be, I'm at your service. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Pecker?
I just have one question. Why is the four-way stop the most difficult one for, for the children to cross?
Well, we had three intersections. We had a stoplight and a two-way and a four-way. And we had different intersections, different scenarios where one was a simplified scenario, one was a typical scenario, one was a complex scenario. And we found that because they were not, they were seeing stop signs all everywhere, it became a little bit more complicated than the other two. But we also, since then, I spoke to the police officer and he has said that the more accidents don't happen on the corners, they happen at the, at the, on the street level because people are just crossing the street without, you know, following a soccer ball, for example. So that way. So street corners are, in those ways, a little bit not as complicated.
Thank you.
I just wanna thank you for sharing this with us and thank also the teachers in the back and other teachers who weren't able to come tonight to, for all the work. It's one of the things, you know, we always talk about quality of life in Urbana and, and you know, we don't have a lot of mountain, we don't have any mountains, we don't have any oceans or anything like that. But when you, quality of life, especially that like you're helping to provide with the schools and giving students in Urbana some of the first opportunities of, of any students anywhere in the country to, to experience all of this information, technology and other tech issues, I think that, that contributes tremendously to the quality of life for, for all families and all people in Urbana. So I appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Certainly I'd like to echo those sentiments. And a lot of the time, we don't see a lot of outreach from the university, but these projects really show that your commitment to the community as well as the university. And so that's certainly much appreciated. I'm sure your students enjoy it too.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
I will continue with the agenda. We were in the middle of the report from the Committee of the Whole. Ms. Wyman?
Item E1D, Resolution Number 2003-05-013R, Resolution for Improvement by Municipality under the Illinois Highway Code 2003 Resurfacing Project for the Committee I So Move.
Very good. We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries with five ayes. Ms. Wyman?
Item E1E, Ordinance Number 2003-05-053, An Ordinance Approving and Authorizing the Execution of a Permanent License Agreement with the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois Insolational Electrical, Gas, and Cable Utilities along Oregon Street for the Committee I So Move.
Second.
Motion a second. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll? Oh, yes, Mr. Gray.
I just wanted to make it clear that the license agreement expanded from when I talked about it last week to include gas and cable in the same general area and location, but those additional facilities are to be included in this license agreement.
Okay, and that was included in the motion in the packet?
Yes.
The council members understand the change from last week? Any discussion? There's no discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with five ayes. Ms. Wyman?
Item E1F, Ordinance Number 2003-05-054, An Ordinance Approving the Champaign-Urbana Solid Waste Disposal System Annual Budget for Fiscal Year 2003 and 2004 for the Committee I So Move.
Second.
We have a motion a second. Any discussion? There's no discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries with five ayes. Ms. Wyman?
That's all for the report from the Committee of the Whole. The next meeting of the Committee of the Whole will take place next Monday, June 9th at 7:30 PM here in Council Chambers at 400 South Vine Street.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have reports of special committees. Any special committee reports this evening? Seeing none, go on to new business. We have a couple items in our new business. The first is hard renewal of the Urbana Home Consortium. This was referred to this meeting from the May 19th meeting. We have two resolutions to consider. We can consider them together if there's no objection. First is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement to participate in a Champaign-Urbana Champaign County Home Investment Partnerships Consortium. It's for the years 2004 to 2006. And the second is a resolution authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement concerning administration of a Champaign-Urbana-Champaign County Home Investment Partners, Partnerships Consortium 2004 to 2006. Mr. Bruy, did you have anything to add?
Just, we have a quick memo that the CDC concurred with the staff recommendation.
Okay. Is there any discussion, any questions? Not a motion regarding these two resolutions being ordered? We have a motion a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Go on to new business. We have a couple items in our new business. The first is hard renewal of the Urbana Home Consortium. This was referred to this meeting from the May 19th meeting. We have two resolutions to consider. We can consider them together if there's no objection. First is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement to participate in a Champaign-Urbana Champaign County Home Investment Partnerships Consortium. It's for the years 2004 to 2006. And the second is a resolution authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement concerning administration of a Champaign-Urbana-Champaign County Home Investment Partners, Partnerships Consortium 2004 to 2006. Mr. Bruy, did you have anything to add?
Just, we have a quick memo that the CDC concurred with the staff recommendation.
Okay. Is there any discussion, any questions? Not a motion regarding these two resolutions being ordered? We have a motion a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
And finally, this evening, we have the annual staff appointments. Please to present to the council the recommendations for the staff appointments. Got the list included there. Virtually no changes from the existing staff. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the staff members for their hard work throughout the year and particularly this year and the coming year. It's gonna be kind of a challenge with the financial situation that we as well as other governments find ourselves in. And want to let the public and know and remind council members of the hard work that our staff has done over the last six months in trying to reduce the costs of the city of Urbana. We've been successful in reducing the expenditures by an additional $500,000 in the current fiscal year, which will carry over to the next fiscal year and help us through this difficult financial time. So that's just one example of the hard work our employees are, are doing and trying to do more with the scarce financial resources that we have here. So I'd like to take this opportunity to thank them for all their hard work. And with that, a motion would be in order.
With approval?
Second.
We have a motion a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Wyman?
Yeah, I, I wish that, that we could give the staff that's worked so hard the, the pay raises that, that they deserve. But I think with their hard work, they also know the, the importance of, the work that the city does and their immense contributions to it. And I hope that, that the fact that we can't pay them what they're worth, nonetheless, that they understand the appreciation that I think as council members we have for them and that the community as a whole expresses to, to, to us about all of their work. And, you know, the, from the planning staff to the firefighters, to police and all up and down the administration is, in all of the different departments, it's just been incredible. And I really appreciate also the department heads' willingness and to contact us about various issues. And then I know when I've had concerns or questions, whether it's been from things I've read or issues that constituents or others have brought up, department heads and others have no problem taking an hour or two, even out of their time, just to meet with me and the constituents or other people and make sure that all the issues are covered. And I also appreciate the mayor and CIO contacting us and giving us regular updates on, on various issues so that, so that we're able to keep informed as well. And so I look forward to supporting these appointments and really appreciate all the work that the staff and the administration are doing to make this, this place just an even better community day by day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wyman. Any other discussion? There's no discussion. Ms. Chenoweth?
Just a briefly, a warm thank you to staff. I really, when it comes to responsiveness and professionalism, I would say those are two, two things that I've experienced with the staff members that I have communicated with. I can't believe how quickly staff turn around my questions. Sometimes it's a matter of minutes. I think, you know, I usually can picture Bill Gray out, out in the field doing things, but boy, five or 10 minutes goes by and I get a response on email right away, phone responses from Dr. Tyler, phone responses from grants management. I have had the police meet with, there was a, there was an assault in my neighborhood, this was a while back, but the chief of police came and met with neighbors in the immediate vicinity of the, of the assault. And we discussed for, I think it was an hour and a half, all the various things that the, that my neighbors could do to prevent this in the future. And, and I know that all of the neighbors really appreciated that, that kind of personal attention. I think that in a city this size, one of the things that we really have to offer to our constituents is the kind of personal attention that, that they're able to receive. And, and I certainly feel like the staff rise to the occasion and given that kind of attention. So a warm thank you to everyone. And I hope that, you know, we can move forward and, you know, I think recognize when we have made, when we have successes and also recognize when we have problems and, and work on them to, to rectify them.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? There's no other discussion. All those in favor of the staff appointments, please seem to have a saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion...